Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the committee poll meeting for January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. I'd like to say that the town in Hinton respectfully acknowledges that it's located on the First People's Traditional Lands. We recognize this traditional territory to respect and understanding to those who walk this land since time immemorial. Today, we uphold our ongoing responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent of the treaties with all the First Peoples and nations that call this place home. The town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community on these sacred lands for generations to come. With that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. So council, any additions or additions to this evening's agenda? Seeing none, administration?
Thank you to the chair for the rest of committing nothing from administration.
Thank you, administration. So look for a motion to adopt the agenda. Counselor Sashik.
We move the committee adopting the agenda for today's meeting.
Thank you, Counselor Sashik. All right, any discussions? And I'll call the question. Committee adopt the agenda as presented, please vote now. And that is carried now. Uh, next, we have two point, uh, sorry, three citizens, members of council. Do we have any citizens in the audience that would wish to say anything, council, sharing? Seeing none, Stacey Campbell, anybody online?
No, there's not.
Thank you. Then moving on to our delegations and presentations, uh, we have the district chamber of commerce DMO presentation, by the representatives at the end of the table there. So, uh, please introduce yourself and floor is all yours.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Erin Reid. I'm the project director of the Destination Management Organisation of the United States, Kelly.
My name is Gerald LeFrons. I am the sitting chair of the board of directors for the Hinton DMO, as well as the general manager of the BCMI Hotel here in town.
And so today, we would, uh, like to give you a bit of an overview of where the DMO is up to since I last presented to you about six months ago. Um, we're going to go through some of the milestones that we've achieved towards the end of twenty twenty-three. We'll look at the approved DMO structure and the board members. Um, we've got a bit of a brand update for you for the destination brand for Hinton, along with some, uh, a marketing campaign that we're just about to get off the ground, and some next steps that we're going to achieve of the organisation. Um, so with regards to, uh, where we are and where we've been, as I said last presented to you about six months ago, I'm happy to confirm that the Hinton Destination Management Organisation Society has now been registered with the government of Alberta. Um, we are a board made out of businesses involved in the visitor economy in Hinton. Um, and the primary goal is to drive year-round economic activity for the members of the organisation. But it's done through a lens of ensuring benefits to residents, um, and ensuring the core values of Hinton and its natural resources and natural beauty is, uh, taken into consideration. We would also like to take this opportunity to thank the Hinton and District Chamber of Commerce, um, for spearheading the development of the DMO over the last couple of years, and thanks to all the groups who catered for us, um, the Explorer Alberta and Northern Rockies, Dana. Um, without all of those groups over the last decade or so, um, we wouldn't be where we are today. Additionally, we would like to recognize the financial support we've received so far, um, through grants primarily through, uh, the town of Hinton. We've also had, uh, Brerys Can, Northern Rockies Economic and Development, and Travel Alberta. So, thank you to you all here. Um, so as you can see from this list, I'm not going to read it all, but we have achieved quite a lot over the last six months. Um, I would like to highlight that we've had a grant approved through Travel Alberta, uh, and that is going to support our first marketing campaign. That's what I'm hoping to get off the ground very quickly here. Um, and we're also going to be presenting the destination brand to you today that is also being, um, developed over the last little while. Um, additionally, we've been working on an approved six-month action plan for the organisation, and we are already well into actioning a lot of those things. Now, I'm going to hand it to Jerry to have a look at the DMO structure.
So, thank you. Thanks, Erin. Um, so as far as the DMO structure is concerned, there are five key elements, uh, that comprise the structure of the DMO. Uh, firstly, we have the DMO Board of Directors, who is in charge of approval of plans and budgets, strategic direction, and the final approval and release of DMF funds. Uh, next, we have the members of the DMO. Uh, these are the local businesses that will be the ones contributing the two percent or another agreed-upon fee, uh, to the DMF. They're eligible to vote at the AGM to appoint the board of directors. As they, as well, they can also sit on the board of directors or sit on the advisory committees. Next, we have the advisory committees. They are in charge of reviewing the budgets and the plans, providing feedback and guidance to the administration, and approval of the plans before they are presented to the board of directors. The DMF element is looked at, looked after by the third-party trustee, who then collects the fees from the members and distributes them to the DMOs. The administration is charged with developing plans and budgets, taking direction from both the board of directors as well as the committees, and the execution of the board-approved plans. Currently, this role is being filled and looked after by Erin. But as we grow, this will, this will become a team of paid professionals working in conjunction with the advisory committees and the board of directors. Uh, taking a closer look at the board of directors. Uh, the board of directors is a group of unpaid elected members within the visitor economy who are governed by the bylaws of the society. I myself am the sitting chair of the board of directors. Uh, we have Scott Sundermalt, who is the sitting vice chair of the board of directors. We have Justin Woodley of the At the Basket Hotels Group. He's the secretary. Uh, we have Jettin Kefour from the Best Western Plus, acting as the treasurer. Uh, locally, we have Adam Kansley of ZS Holdings, uh, more well-known as the Holiday Inn, uh, hotels here in town. We have Eric Johnson, uh, from the Folding Mountain Brewery. We have Tyler Waugh of the Hinton and District Chamber of Commerce. Uh, members at large, we have Walter Jameson and Brian LeBerge. Uh, we are also looking to fill two non-voting positions. Uh, one representative from the Yellowhead County, as well as one representative from the municipality of Hinton itself. Uh, finally, we have Erin Reid, who is currently our project director and working as part of administration.
Okay, so now it is my joy to be sharing with you the work that we've been doing on our Hinton Destination Brand. Um, we've been working with consultants, uh, Toby Johnson and Helen Paulson. And, uh, there's been quite a lot of work involved with this, from initial surveys that were distributed through businesses within the visitor economy, um, a big brand stormy session that was held at the end of October. Um, and since then, we've worked with the consultants, um, our board and the advisory committees to continually revise the work that they've been doing, uh, to get us to a point where we are today. Um, the big takeaway I'd like to share with you all today is that the brand is available to be reviewed at hinton dot travel. Um, if you go to that URL, you will get to see all the work that is being done there. Um, and I'm going to go through it in a little bit more detail, but I invite you to go to that website and provide any feedback that you might have. Um, from the perspective of what the brand is, I'm going to start with the tagline. Uh, the tagline we've settled on is "Yours to Explore." We really feel it encapsulates that spirit of boundless adventure and personalized discovery that's available in Hinton and the Northern Rockies. And we also really like that this tagline can also be modified to focus on different messaging. So we might change it to be "Yours to Stay," "Yours to Bike," "Yours to Ski," "Yours to Taste," depending on the messaging that we're trying to use with those communications that are going out. There is a lot of information on this slide. There's also a lot of information behind a lot of the reasoning on hinton dot travel. So I really do invite you to have a read through. Um, and then this is where we've ended up with our logo. Um, you'll see the shape of a compass kind of coming into it, uh, with the northern arrow really connecting to our location in the Northern Rockies. Uh, these are all variations of the one logo. So they could be used in different messaging, different formatting, um, and, you know, really will work in a lot of different, um, situations, sorry. Um, here is an example of what the homepage of the website might look like. I'm not saying that it's going to, but this is like an example of how it could look. Uh, we also have an example of what, you know, an ad might look like. This would be a high-level sort of, um, higher level option. Uh, you'll notice in this example, the text has movement. It's more of a hand-drawn font. The typeface is a little unusual perhaps for a destination brand, but we really feel that it speaks to the more adventurous sort of playful and wild nature of the Northern Rockies and Hinton. And it also connects to our strength of being a less structured destination, unlike other destinations that I consider. Um, here's an example of what a landing page, you know, this one for example is where, you know, you might look at accommodations in Hinton. And you're starting to see some of the, uh, more hand-drawn sort of elements in the screen. Um, and so this iconography is going to, you know, be used throughout and really connected with the brand, again, speaking to that sort of playful nature of it. Um, and again, the colors seem, but they're mountain tones, but we've made it just a little bit more fun. So, you know, you've got the glacial lakes all the way through until the Alpen Gorge, um, but, and representative of the seasons really in turn. Um, we have a little bit more fun as well. Um, and so, uh, I would also, now that we've got a brand, again, inviting for feedback towards that. Um, we are now in a position where we would like to get a, uh, marketing campaign off the ground. Uh, thanks to Travel Alberta, we have grant funding for our winter and spring campaign. The campaign is designed to introduce Hinton to our regional market as a destination to consider. Um, so it's going to be an integrated effort. We're going to utilize both digital and traditional marketing channels to maximize that reach. Um, the campaign will introduce our new destination brand that you have just seen, um, and hopefully help align the community around it as well. Uh, we're looking to prove the DMO's value by growing occupancy, uh, Q1 occupancy particularly, from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Um, and we would also like to point out that, that, you know, this is a really lovely opportunity because we're going to take explorehinton.org, which was, uh, originally a partnership between the town and the chamber, and morphed over into the DMO, and it's going to become a key call to action for this campaign. Um, and we're really excited or like, we like the alignment between the original, um, explorehinton to our new tagline of "Yours to Explore." Um, and now I will pass back over to Jerry, who's going to give us a run-through of our next steps.
Excellent. Thanks again. So, um, clearly, we are at the beginning of this. We've made some good headway. Uh, there are plenty of things left to do. Now, we do have an active six-month action plan, but some of the main highlights and key takeaways that I was hoping that we can take, or you folks could take from today, is that we are committed to begin the collection of the DMF from the members, sorry, from the initial members, uh, all while continuing to work and connect with other hoteliers and visitor economy businesses, uh, to grow the contributions. Further to that, we will start to work on a three-to-five-year plan, uh, in order to maintain our momentum and continue to reach the organisation's goals. Now, with that being said, of course, I would like to open the floor to any questions or any discussion anybody would like.
Great. Thank you, Erin. Thank you, Jared. Counselor Taylor, are we going to be successful? Have you ever measured success?
Uh, are you talking in terms of the first, the initial marketing campaign or like long-term?
Like, like a million and two thousand bucks a year. Are you, that's going to have a result on occupancy, say, for example? Like, do you have occupancy goals?
Uh, not at this point in time. Um, we are measuring and we have a goal for the initial campaign that we're going to be running, like, immediately until, you know, into the spring. Um, and that goal, uh, is as aligned with the Travel Alberta campaign. I believe it was a, uh, growth of about five percent occupancy from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. So at this point in time, because we haven't completed our entire, uh, twelve to twenty-four month action plan, um, we are sort of doing a campaign-based, and every single campaign or, or spend will have a result attached to it.
Yeah. Will that be occupancy like year-round or are you looking for occupancy during, uh, certain periods of the year?
Again, depending on the campaign. So this campaign is specific to winter and spring, so we're in a Q1. And so we're wanting to grow Q1, support one occupancy from twenty twenty-three by five percent into twenty twenty-four, and we see that that is a reasonable goal and an expectation. Um, but say if we were successful in getting a, a full campaign off the ground, we would have a different set of results that we would be looking for. Yeah.
And summer occupancy isn't, uh, so, global?
You know what? Year-round is...
I mean, as far as my hotel's concerned, there's not a heck of a lot of room for rooms. Uh, so monetary, in the summertime, yeah, the high season months. Now, monetary, of course, there's always a little bit more to be made. Um, but I have a hundred rooms in my hotel, and I typically sell between ninety and ninety-five of them, or a hundred, throughout most of the summer months. So, of course, that's my experience. Other hotels, my experience with things. But that's kind of where I'm thinking we're at with regards to summer. I think the, the real meat and potatoes that's on the table to rassback is going to be in the shoulder season for winter and spring and fall as well.
And as we grow the membership base, you know, if we can get, you know, tourism operators involved, they might have more space, so we might be looking at filling operators as opposed to filling hotels in the summer. But really, right now, we are focusing on like the three, the three other seasons.
Counselor Reese?
Thank you, Deputy. So, um, when will the hotels start charging a weekly fee?
I think that's, um, the initial hotels will be aimed for March first.
And what is the percentage?
Two percent.
Two percent?
Yeah.
And one more thing, if I may. Now, it's my understanding that people can look ahead and go and say, I don't want to pay. But it's not an option.
Uh, yes, it, it's, it's not something that we can, you know, enforce through a government levy. Um, but, uh, it's very, very, very unusual. Um, but, uh, my understanding is, yes, they could turn around and say, I don't want to pay this. I, I don't know if it's really ever happened before.
So, starting in my, the people's.
That's it. Thank you, sir.
Um, council, any other questions? Oh, Counselor Sashik. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, it's the question on the forecast or potential revenue generation and all about here. And maybe some, uh, lots of some campaigns or events that the DMO would be looking to, uh, go forward.
Yeah, so, um, as part of that six-month action plan that we're, we're well into right now, when we're undergoing a budgeting exercise, um, while we don't have a completed budget that's been written at a board level just yet, um, so I can't really speak to it, but, um, it will hopefully be published soon. Um, uh, and in terms of other activities and events and those sorts of things, again, that's, it's all part of the plan we're developing right now. Um, hopefully, in another six months' time, we'll have all of that information.
Yeah, no worries.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Counselor Sashik. Counselor Taylor?
Well, what? What do you need a non-voting counselor for? Like, we've got lots of boards and things where we're being explored, but we're not, uh, a member of the board. So, to me, if you were a voting member, then, then we actually have to say, uh, we're just sitting there to make a chat or a way. And that may just say, so why do you need a counselor?
Um, the thought, uh, was that, you know, this is a really strong partnership, and it's been, you know, with your support that we've got to this point, and we see it as being a continued partnership. Um, a lot of the activity of a DMO really connects in with a lot of the activity of, you know, our council and, and the benefits of residents and those sorts of things. And it's great to hear a perspective of what town council is doing and, um, how, you know, we can work together. Um, and while I might not be voting, I do think that there is a lot of guidance that we can achieve by having a member of the municipality of Hinton on our board. Um, and then there's also just lines of communication, you know, if we have someone from the municipality on our board, that anything with where do you mean, and what's upcoming, can be shared with you, and, and, and it just keeps information flowing nice and easily. Um, would be my perspective on that. Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Council, any other questions with the committee? Well, thank you, uh, for sharing the last six months, and, uh, I really do like, personally, I like the "Yours to Explore" and the build-up of that, to, to highlight the different amenities, whether it's eating, drinking, whatever in our community. So, I, I, I really appreciate what, what a thought was put into that. So, thank you for that. Um, so, yeah, uh, and we do have on the agenda, uh, as one of our reports to discuss the, uh, appointments of a council member on the... So, we'll be discussing them later. Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you. So, thank you. All right, it's committee, so we're going to move on. Here are the required reports from administration. And the first on the agenda of the reports is five point one, the council appointment of the Destination Management Organisation. And I'll have, I'll have to review to, to shoot.
Thank you, and through the chair to the committee. Um, the Destination Management Organisation has just given us great, uh, resubmission of any progress in their plans for the future. Um, over the past year or two, they've been developing and, uh, with a lot of commitment from the town in Hinton as well. And they are now a separate society with their own own work. In addition to funding, uh, support, the town has expressed keen interest in this organisation and seeing we get off the ground and get the accomplishments that we see happening in other parts of the province with these sorts of organisations. Uh, they are requesting that the town in Hinton appoint an elected official to their board in a non-voting capacity, unfortunately. Terms of reference have not been developed as yet, but the time commitment appears to be about one hour per month for seven months of the year, potential for additional special meetings from time to time. There's a small cost impact on that because, uh, as, uh, the elected official will be compensated, and we included that in the implications of decision in the report. And approximately between eight hundred and seventy-five to nine hundred and eleven. Uh, committee can either refer the matter to a future meeting of council for further discussion or and/or send a recommendation from this meeting, if you'd like to convene and, and an alternate. So with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, administration. I hope Counselor McGee.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious if, uh, there's been any, uh, discussions or conversations floated with counselors or council vote who might be interested?
Turn to Mr. Mayor.
Uh, I've seen some email traffic that suggests Counselor Sashik may be interested and haven't heard anyone else express any interest as of yet.
Counselor, sorry, Counselor McGee.
Yeah, just for myself, uh, speaking to it, I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, if that's something Counselor Sashik was interested in, uh, I'd certainly be happy to support his, his nomination moving forward.
Thank you, Counselor McGee. Counselor Sashik?
Uh, thank Mr. Chair. Yeah, directly to Counselor McGee's question, yes, I would be interested in being council's representative on the, the DMO. And worked with the initial planning for a destination marketing organisation point sometime way back when it was on the chamber executive, probably ten, fifteen years ago. And then since then, I've been, um, intermittently, uh, to varying levels, continued to be involved in the DMO and certainly following it. And, uh, I just, I think it's got great potential for, for funding new events and, and supporting business in our community and helping to draw that tourism traffic. And I would be happy, I'd be proud to be council's representative on that, uh, on that committee of council software. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor Sashik. I myself, and I too would support that. I, I'd leave, personally, I think I'd leave the, uh, alternate to the mayor to review the committees and who is currently on it, and, you know, and make that decision based on that, but I would definitely support, uh, Counselor Sashik. Now, so, committee, any other? Counselor McGee?
Uh, I'd like to take the recommended action with that committee refer the matter of, uh, council appointment to Hinton's, uh, Destination Marketing Organisation to a future meeting of council with the inclusion of Counselor Sashik as the council. And if I could just speak to it, Mr. Chair, my assumption would be because there's an alternate request that the mayor would simply follow up on the, the alternate as the, you know, it's the mayor's prerogative to do with, with our council. And that's it. Just, I appreciate the conversation, and certainly, I think there's a great opportunity here.
Great. Thank you, Counselor McGee. And so we do have a direction. Committee, any conversation? Counselor Taylor?
Yeah, I also part of that group. We've got lots of groups, and we don't have rights on. It's a non-voting, uh, thing. And it might be different if, uh, this was, uh, you know, if we had voted to have this kind of act, but it's more I see an industry initiative. And we're a small town. If they want to, uh, talk to us, we just have to have a way. So, like, to me, it's, we don't have reps on the pathway of this work, maybe we support that in a variety of ways. Thank you. Not that it doesn't work out. That could be fine, right?
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Committee? Any other comments, questions in the direction? Counselor Sashik?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and speak to it. Uh, regardless of who winds up being pointed to the committee, I think there is value in having that council representative working with the DMO, uh, the DMO and, 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 uh, town in Hinton have a lot of aligned goals in terms of, uh, business development and tourism development and all those things. And I think having the ability for a council to be able to represent the town's viewpoint and discussions regarding the DMO and the DMF has significant value. And being able to do that directly at the meeting rather than having to do it passively if the DMO council is and asks for information, I think has value as well. And the fact that it's a non-voting position, I actually see value in that, too. I think it's important that it's communicated to the, the public and to the members that this isn't a government initiative, that this is something that's not being driven by the town of Hinton. This is industry-driven with input from the town. And that's why I support the motion that's been put forward. Thank you.
Counselor Sashik, Counselor Reese?
Thank you, Deputy. I think anytime we have an opportunity to have any one of us sit at the table, that's all of us going to that table. We are getting information coming back to us monthly. I think this will work. I can have, uh, someone sit there, and I would certainly support Counselor Sashik.
Counselor Reese? Committee, any other further comments or questions? Seeing none, then we'll call the question, that committee refer the matter of a council appointment to Hinton's Destination Management Organisation to a future meeting of council with the inclusion of Counselor Sashik as the council president. Please vote now. And that has carried five to one. Counselor Taylor against. Okay, committee, anything further on this matter before we move on? Seeing none, we'll go on to five point two, town appointment golf professional advisor, and then over to Mr..
No, thank you through the chair. There is many, I'll refer this to, um, Director T P T Project, Mr. Linsenza.
Thank you, Dr. Uh, through the chair to the rest of the committee. Um, on December the nineteenth, council asked us to go out and seek golf professionals that could respond to the call of helping council have an independent golfing expert to evaluate some of the concerns that may impose by the proposed development. And so we've done exactly that between just this year, we started four proponents, uh, after researching the proponents, um, of which three responded to that outreach, and then we had meetings with them as well, teams meetings, you know, Christians still in U K, of which we received three that in the responses. We had one formal response in terms of proposal outlining the scope and the objectives that we outlined in our teams' one-on-one meeting with them. Um, out of the three, I would say all have the experience to assist us, but in terms of completion, we've had two very good, uh, sort of responses. So, if we could just go through the sort of analysis component that we've done. Um, organisation one, as we would call it. Um, they have understood the scope we've outlined in our teams meeting. They've given us a full proposal fee toward the scope. And what they've done is they've given us a sort of a face one, face two approach to this, meaning that they would first get all the information, evaluate, and then come up with options, and then prepare the bigger picture of response to the golfers' impacts. Um, the organisation two has also given us sufficient information, however, there is a cost for them to prepare the proposal for the goals that they deem that they've done already. And then the third opponent is also very experienced, but it seems like they're overcommitted, but they're going to provide us information. And with that, I believe that we have the right expertise in front of us between the three organisations, and the council submissions we've... And if council submissions, we will then bring this back to a formal council recommendation. At this point, I would be open for any questions to be raised.
Thank you, Mr. Rousseau. I myself and Counselor McGee. I'm just wondering if it does the get directed to come back to regular. Is it possible for organization two to have a more accurate estimate of cost for that meeting? Or or is this just that we want to go forward with it? It would then be administration's decision on which of the proponents would would be signed as.
Mr. Chair, we could do that. I'm just thinking in terms of timelines and the sensitivity of the one, I suspect two with option for organization one, that it takes a timeline from start to finish when they will have that announced and stuff. Which gives us the comfort level based on price and schedule that they've thought it through. I'm not saying the other organization is not, and we may give them an equal chance, but we will remain clear at the time of asking what the objectives are and should the response be. We can ask the questions that will have the committee, if you want us to do that before bringing back the council. We'll have the turn of the city board and our equipment is gonna be with council in the gender package for finding out the impact of one.
Great. Thank you. Counselor McGee.
Yeah, I guess my question is based on sort of building off of the information that are received or the council received from the golf course previously. I think the company out of Calgary was Browning. Does that sound right? Um, you know, and in short, the report said, you know, they have some concerns with the proposed project moving forward. So I guess my question from a procedural standpoint. If council hires a professional golf advisor and they come back and they look at the stats of the project and the current state and they say, and there's a bit of supposition here, but I just need to understand the potential outcomes. And they say, yeah, we also have a concern with sort of where things are at and what the plans are. We think it's, you know, going to negatively impact golf in Hinton. Are we still at a point where administration has the ability and council has the ability? Um, and the part, the proponent has the ability to make significant changes to the project to counteract that?
Chair, to the rest of the committee, Counselor McGee, the answer is yes, because this whole exercise is deemed to understand that the safety concerns has been a constant. The the distance of the walk between sixteen and seventeen. And then, of course, the impact of golf play in terms of flow. Now, will we, will we be able to respond to all three and, you know, nitpick and get it one hundred percent correct? I was promised this afternoon to have a conversation with the director of golf and the health society and we talked a little bit. And there is room for us to talk through this. So we may get the same response, but what is the solution to the responses? The the safety zones is going to be something that needs to be addressed. What can we look with? The other one that came out of these is that, you know, allowing the regulations have changed since this fall has been formed. So there's some realization, there's some of the strange things. And so both then people that have done that, and it's not going to be administration with the golf, we all best would be gathered. But we'll also get the partners, like whoever is the professionals, to work together so that we can come together with a response. Indeed, what we are looking for is not to get council to design the golf course. We're looking to tell council we've resolved it and here's what it looks.
Thank you. And if I could go back and keep.
Okay. Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, so, um, you know, we don't have talk about DUI and that says that course has to be, uh, uh, improve and make golf better. So that means that install professional. And that can only be interpreted through the sales agreement that we have, because we can't go with sales agreement plus really. And that comes down to addressing that competition for all. But, uh, point in detail, uh, for the values and addressing the safety concerns. It should be the two things. Correct.
To the chair, Counselor Taylor, you asked me to correct. We will not into the details. We will believe our opinion spread on our PSA product side of thing. But we will ensure that certain clauses that is addressed through our interaction of getting the right solution to the case.
And and I'm also correct. We can't go plus plus to you.
Yeah, we'll stay within the terms of a.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor, and myself, and then Counselor McGee. Uh, just a quick question about this source of funds, because this isn't a, wasn't a budgeted amount. It it's coming from the Future Development Entrepreneurial Fund, it says, but what, where, where is that? Uh, what is that? I've never heard of that before.
I will tell it over to my colleague, Candace.
Thank you.
Here to all committee. Noted in our reserve schedules that account keeps, there is a reserve fund labeled just as that. There have been significant activity in it in in two thousand and twelve, kind of went dormant a little bit in two thousand and seventeen. Since twenty eighteen, the only activity in the account has been a little bit of investment interest that has been applied to that. So I've made us some residual funds from a long ago rent project.
If I may follow up with that. I get that. I'm just wondering, wouldn't this not fall under contract? The contract budget potentially rather than a reserve fund? Just, just thinking. Any comment, administration?
Through to all committee. Most definitely it would. It's not a capital item and it's, uh, we would have to look and see if there was any leeway for this under anyone's contracted services budget. It certainly is an amount that love and disgust at the time budget would be.
Fair enough. And if I may, just one more. This could be one of those two that mid-year look at for budget configuration and things that could be looked at that one too, uh, to see if it if it's worthwhile looking at the contract. Does that appear to say?
Due to all of committee, absolutely. And administration always looks to fund few operating whenever possible at first. Our fail-safe is not just a good service.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor McGee and then Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. When I was looking at the two proponents who submitted, um, their high-level estimates, their fee estimates. So I looked at the login partner and I looked at the putting home, put it home. I want to make sure I'm pronouncing that right. The first thing that struck me was that there was a large price differential and that put a comb had suggested a fee of about thirty-five hundred dollars and the login partner was sixty thousand five hundred. So at first I looked at the two login partners seems to have a lot more international projects globally. I mean, they certainly operate in Canada, but and and with some very prestigious sort of courses. And then I looked at put a comb and I was worried because I thought, okay, we're gonna get, you know, bargain basement stuff here. But there, it appeared when I went through their project list uh, that they've actually worked on a number of fairly well-known projects in Canada. Including our own, uh, but other like Red Tail Lending, Edmonton Petroleum Golf and Country Club. And then so I was, I felt better in looking that, okay, they actually have some experience with um, a large number of courses in Alberta specifically. Uh, do you have any comment on the experience differential potentially between the two? Because in this case, it actually strikes me that the cheaper one might actually be the better option because they have more Alberta-based experience and with some pretty good courses as well. So did you want to comment on that at all?
Yes, I can. And through the chair to counsel with the rest of our committee. The thirty-five hundred dollars that reflected here is not the scope of the entire one. That is to prepare the scope for us to get a proposal. And and so that dictates to me as a like final materials approach, meaning that is a price good from thirty-five hundred to potential X plus. So that was a little bit of a sort of a red flag. Coming back to the experience, you're absolutely right, that both all three of these proponents can can answer the call. But I was just looking at the objectivity of the response to the same message that we gave to all three proponents at the same time, while at different meetings, but at the same time. Um, that lobbying partners has responded to understand the call to that. If you look at the two-page proposal, they've actually broken about how we will attack the the project and how they would respond in terms of the timeline, which was also important to us.
Thank you, Counselor McGee, and I have Mayor Nissen.
And through the chair, his board, I was just wondering what the balance of that reserve fund, the future entrepreneurial.
Through to all committee, um, at the time I provided director, this director Russo with the number of thirty-two thousand. And in doing further reconciling today, it's thirty-six thousand, because we did increase with some investment income entries.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Stachik and then Counselor Taylor.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make the record on that. The committee refers the appointment of a golf professional advisor to a future regular council meeting. And I would speak to it. I think it's important that we do get a golf professional advisor consultant phone to this objective. The timing of it right now is just perfect. This is a unique development in the sense that it's a commercial development that is happening upon and significantly affecting a working and playing golf course. So I think it's important that we do have somebody that administration can lean on and look to in providing advice on best practices for playability, for design, for replacement enhancement, all of those things that administration is very good at what they do. They don't have like the sections. So having access to somebody like this is is a tool that I think is absolutely necessary to make sure that this is approached and carried through with the best chance of success. And the reason I think the timing is good. We've now gotten through the rezoning and now it comes to the development permit application portion where the proponent is actually going to start submitting their plans and their designs for review, for approval, for development permit. And that's the point where a golf course professional is going to show their real true value and the and the reason for having them on board, because they're the ones who can help advise some of the conditions, some of the restrictions, some of the things that need to be built into the development permit process to make sure that we are achieving the best chance of success with this approach. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Stachik. So committee, we do have now a direction. I have Counselor Taylor, Counselor McGee, and then myself. Counselor Taylor.
No, I'm in favor too. I just, my question is pause. If the president of the golf club told me they spent thousands of dollars in their professional spending sixteen, twenty thousand. Sure. Next one we should put up.
Yeah, they they is, and I've done a quick map on this. You're looking at about forty to fifty-five hours of work for this amount of money of sixteen thousand in change. And what they would do is they'll have phase one and phase two. The phase one would be information gathering, analysis of the safety, reviewing the the goal outlined by the proponent supply as to what they've done to the, uh, any changes to the layout of the part of the line proposed development. Uh, any tweaks to that, they're interacting with them and asking certain questions. And then a summary of the impact on the resulting of the spheres. That would be phase one. Phase two would then have the alternative solutions to council. And that would then give you the spatial analysis that will give you the alternative areas that they could possibly put their footprint, realizing that we don't have a legal footprint right now. And that we purposely left it like that so that we are going to move to ensure that the golf experience is not impacted negatively instead should be to the contrary. And so that's what phase two will do. And then they'll have a comparison matrix as to what we can do. So that's what sixteen and a half thousand dollars buys us.
Steve, then the phone lines are still.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have Counselor McGee.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess, uh, the question for administration is understanding the potential notices of motion that are in the, or that notices of motion that may and then depending on the will of council as those hit, uh, regular council. I would assume that the impact of those could potentially, uh, impact the scope of work that the base understanding of the situation in context, context, pardon me, that the professional advisor would have moving forward. But in reality, if there are potentially more capital funds being brought into the golf course in the future and potentially if, uh, we're looking at the potential of expanding the footprint of the golf course, are those things that can be taken into the scope of work done by the advisor? I'm assuming yes, but I want to be sure when I go to community members that I have the.
Look at the chair to counsel McGee, yes, absolutely. I mean, those motions are speaking to this extent that should we have to replace halls in the future, that we have the needed or access to the lands, meaning the crown lands and access. And that is one of the exercises we as administration have already explored to see what's the timeline's doing to achieve this land acquisition. And is it in our best interest to do that? What other options do we have? So when we sit down with the scope of coming back to class, hey, we solved the problem, but the problem will be solved over X amount of years. Years what it looks like and those lands within like winter, that would be like.
May I comment on that, Mr. Chair? And that that adds some comfort because again, in discussing the situation with affected stakeholders like that, that continues to build forward the the side of the argument where people are asking the question, where do we see the investment in the golf course over the long term? How do we see this actually adding value to the golf course? And I think this is a realistic answer. I can say, well, if council goes ahead and hires this professional advisor and it's the will of council in tandem to do these things, that's a realistic benefit to the golf course over the long term. So that's something that'll, that'll help that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McGee and I myself and Counselor Stachik. Um, I just want to speak to the direction. I'll be in favor of this. I I share the sentiments, uh, that have been spoke to. This is the perfect timing, uh, for this project. Prior to this, you know, I think honestly until the rezoning was completed, it would have been, uh, you know, unnecessary. But now that we have that happening and the project is moving forward, you know, with the the idea of development to the next stage, this is, this is going to assist uh, both administration, uh, and golf course in general and also uh, partnership line as well. So totally in favor of that. And I do appreciate uh, Counselor Taylor's question because that was my assumption is that report that that was spoke to, uh, by the society was only how it doesn't work, but it didn't speak to how it could work. Um, and the end of the, you know, and so hence why the more work that needs to be done. So I do appreciate that. And I think this is a good step in the right direction for this area, um, with this decision. So, thank you. Mayor Nissen.
Thank you, Chair. Just a reminder that we have received golf professional reports from a proponent and an association. They're both talking past each other at this point and hiring our own advisors, our own professionals is just responsible.
Absolutely. Thank you. Counselor Stachik.
That I'm good. Actually, Mr. Chair, it's gonna address. Thank you.
All right, committee, any other further comments or questions on the direction? Seeing none then. We will call the question. The committee refers the appointment of the golf professional advisor to a future regular meeting, regular council meeting. Please vote now.
I just press the wrong button.
Okay. Uh, now it is carried unanimously. Thank you. Hey, committee, any other further on this, any other discussion on this matter? Um, just for administration too, we have a little bit more time because we don't have a meeting next week in February sixth of this. Uh, sorry, Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, just a kind of a comment, yeah, comment. This one, you gotta be careful with how bitter the council gets with this process, right? Because the development plan, you know, the the process, the ball, uh, development process that we get in there for fingers start to help it up too much. Opportunities for us are set. So. Good for you.
Mr. Chair, continue the next one. Committee. And you're correct, Counselor Taylor, that in a sort of mountain, this this is TV designing and having, I should say, too much into the day to days. However, this is a unique project. It's probably a case, and it's going to be our last in a legacy that it will establish. It's important to keep your prize and keep you involved. But, you know, to understand the difference of the lanes that we run as administrationists as that, and yourself as governing body. So we will keep your prize. And if we bring this, you typically, if we had to hire a golf professional, we would do this through administrative means of getting big quotes in what we got. So this is the type of way that we want to keep you included. I think we both have to do that. But you could accomplish that in your place as councilors and others. Now we get here, however, this is a big project that council does, and we can know every minute apart.
Administration, Counselor Taylor. Seeing no more, we'll move on then to our last report here, five point three, support for settlement services in Jasper and Hinton, and I'll hand this over to Director Jink.
Well, thank you, and through the chair to the rest of the committee. This is a letter of support requested from the municipality of Jasper for two reasons. They're they're hoping to extend settlement services. They have settlement services that have had in Jasper for the past five years. This helps newcomers with technical support in some respects for their citizenship applications, their permanent residency applications, and different regulatory applications that they may be undertaking in Canada, as well as integration within the community. Jasper being quite unique and quite dependent on newcomers or job consultants. They're they've always been in the business for a few years. We ran a little pilot project in Hinton last year, because they had a little extra funding. And based in the FCSS offices, they extended settlement services to the our our local newcomers here for a short pilot project. It was very successful. And we see this as an augmentation of the services provided to newcomers through the rural screen in Hinton. So they partnered, the municipality of Jasper is partnering on this application with Hinton Employment and Learning Place, and they will be the agency delivering these services in Hinton, if supported. Just to give you an idea of the kind of services that they do provide in addition to what I've just mentioned, they they do a place a support worker in the schools to help newcomer students to integrate in the community. They provide settlement services for workers, sorry, a settlement service worker for adult needs, including citizenship and other applications, but also employment support. So if someone's having problems with their employer, they'll have somebody that they can go to for advice who is who understands the system and can help them with it. And they also have this other program, a couple of other programs that have been well established in Canada. One I want to mention is the HIBI program, which is home instruction for parents of preschool youngsters. And this is actually a home support worker that visits parents at home with young children, facilitating their integration in the community, helping them connect with rec centers and school registration and so on. Very successful in the country. And as Hinton and the Learning Place implements this, they will also continue their current ESL classes and the socials that are being. So a draft letter of support has been provided. And so we're just looking for consensus to support this, in which case the mayor will then escape the letter and now be sent off, all return to council for.
Thank you, Director Jink. I have Counselor Statich and then Counselor Goo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just another question regarding. The pilot project was run in partnership with FCSS. And then moving forward, it's going to be run through the municipality of Jasper and FCS. I was just wondering, is there any information on why it would be run through FCS? And I ask because family and community support services seems to be a more natural fit than specifically.
Yes, through the chair to the rest of the committee. So a couple of points I think I need to clarify is, one is it was not really directly in conjunction with FCSS, FCSS building and the staff there, the town supplied some office space and a location for people to come. But it was the Hinton, or sorry, it was the Jasper Settlement Services staff that delivered those services in Hinton last year. And and as well, so I I have to say that the FCSS services, social services in in Hinton Municipal don't have the level of expertise required to really provide advice to people on their citizenship and their permanent residency applications. It's outside of our realm of expertise, which is why settlement services are not earning. Even though we have so many newcomers, we have a cluster, we have many permanent residents. So I'd see as a natural fit, it's not preventative social services, which is the mandate of FCSS primarily, inasmuch as it is settlement services being specific. Expertise.
Oh, well, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that clarification very much and having that understanding now. I can see how Hinton Employment and Learning Place would be probably a better partner than FCSS. So I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Goo and then Mayor Nissen.
My only question is financial, and I didn't see it in the report. There's no matching grant requirement or anything like that if we sign off on the letter of support.
Through the chair to the rest of the committee? No, none at all. It's really just a matter of courtesy from the municipality of Jasper before they reach out and place some people in Hinton. Through the, they're going to be mentoring help quite closely. So before they did that, they wanted to make sure we were okay with them taking that home.
Mayor.
That's what.
Just got some address. Okay. Counselor Statich and Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So not being particularly familiar with the grant application. Did we walk through that a little bit and assess the multi-year grants? It's it's the funding forms.
I cannot supply that information at this time. I'll have to look into it. No, I really couldn't even guess. I don't believe it's one year. I believe it's multi-year, but we'll have to find out. Get back to council about that.
Mayor, do you have some questions?
Not entirely on the whole process of the grant application, but my understanding from the discussions with the people down at help, is the grant is due, or this application is due at the end of this month. The plan looks well supported, and they've got a plan to go forward with settlement services in Jasper. But this is a fast turnaround, straight away.
Message.
If you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So here's my challenge. When these things come to us last minute and we have questions about it, and there's not time to get questions adequately answered, I sometimes feel pressured into supporting these types of things without fully knowing what they are. And my issue is not knowing if this is a one-year, multi-year, how long this is going to be offered. If it's only a one-year grant, and then it's not available again moving forward. I hate to, you know, point at precedent, but what seems to have happened in the past is that the organizations then wind up looking to the municipality for support because it's the program's been so well received and it was a great success. And we wind up taking the the obligation that was put forward by some other branch of government with the best intentions, I'm sure. But we wind up with that. So I don't, without having a better knowledge of what this grant program is and what it entails, I I know there's a lot of, but I'm not certain I can support this right now. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Statich. Counselor Taylor.
This is to support newcomers through the rural stream program. Said correct.
Thank you, through the chair, through the committee, not specifically just them, but anyone that's a newcomer to Canada that is trying to get settled and stay in the community.
Well, the rural stream program of the last year has brought us the greatest number of people. Because before the rural stream program, we had lots of vacancies in our tail, which kind of businesses. Now, it seems like a lot of people have the staff they need, a hundred plus people. So how many more people coming like next year? Like you've already sort of fully staffed up to the man.
Right, thank you.
Well, thank you, and through the rapport chair, the rest of the committee. I can't say that Hinton's staffed up, because the last time I looked, there was about a hundred and forty-five jobs still open on the little job bank in Hinton. What we've done to date is we've worked more on the retention side of the rural rail stream. So these people that we're prioritizing in the process are already in Hinton working on open work permits. So they've got up to two years to work. But to prevent the turnover that occurs when those people have to leave, we've been endorsing them for permanent residence through the outwork program. And that's been very successful. We get into five hundred and five thousand, or a hundred and five people, sorry, that have been working so far. So that's working more on the retention and reducing turnover.
And myself, and then Counselor Goo, and I guess. I I share Counselor Statich's concern. The only thing that I guess gives me a little satisfaction is that it isn't been linked to FCSS. It would be an organization in our community that's made, that's providing the service. So I'd be more inclined to support it. I would have some concerns if it was FCSS and how long it would be. And if it would become, you know, a municipal question then. But because it is an outside agency, we're just, I think, saying we support them supporting or getting funding for that. So but I think that at some point, it would be nice to know how long it is going to last.
Thank you, through the chair, the rest of the committee. I think you provide that information now, just to do a quick little bit of research here. There are five year grants. So that would be their grants window. Last one was opened in twenty nineteen. This is going to twenty eligible for division.
Okay, thank you, administration, for that. Hey, I have Counselor Goo.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. I just need, really, it's a simple confirmation. It's in the report, on page one of two of the report under background. So the success of the pilot inspired FCSS to propose that help collaborate with Jasper Settlement Services to quietly grant them? That's correct?
That is correct. Thank you. That is one of the roles that FCSS is developing the community nonprofit groups to provide services without involving.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, committee, we have no recommendation at this point. Everybody, yes, Counselor Reese.
Thank you, Deputy. I would like to go with option one, to move that committee reaches consensus to support the municipality of Jasper's application for a grant to implement settlement services in Hinton. This is a neighboring community. They're asking for our help. It's a five-year grant. And I, I think as a supporter of the community, we should.
Thank you, Counselor Reese. Committee, we then have a consensus on the table. Any, Counselor Statich?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with the information from administration that it's more than likely a multi-year grant, I'm in support of the proposed motion. Anything that can help make things easier for newcomers to our community, can each other help come to the seminar and become active, engaged members of the community is a good thing. I will support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Statich. Ready? Counselor Goo?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, like Counselor Statich, I'm certainly willing to support this. I think, again, it would have been nice, a little bit more lead probably would have been helpful, but I think it's one of those things that's relatively low threat. Really, all we're doing is connecting some partner agencies together and saying that, you know, as a community, we support this program moving forward in our community. And I can't really see, you know, if Jasper had had a bad time with their initial run-through or it wasn't successful, I don't see them moving forward with looking their partner up to continue, to continue that. And again, help as a pretty proven track right here in town of working with, supporting our our citizens. So, yeah, happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Goo. Many? You know, for the discussion then, I'll call it a question. The committee reaches consensus to support the municipality of Jasper's application for a grant to implement settlement services in Hinton. Please vote now. That is carried unanimously. Thank you, committee. So that wraps up our reports for this evening. We're going to move on to six point one, to council reports, and I will start with Counselor Goo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing to report.
Counselor Taylor?
Two things. Mentioned to the mayor that the provincial caucus is coming through town for a meeting in Jasper. Saw February at Paul and Curtain. Other communities are giving things to, for a gift bag or stuff like, like giving pens and stuff, giving socks. So we have something to give, so we can keep our, you know, but I don't want to talk about it. Something like that, sixty items that we could give. We need a, we we need a motion or something like that.
Administration?
Through the chair, the rest of the committee. I don't think so. Your intentions are are probably adequate to, so take that. Too much. We would need, sorry, February, right now our merch cabinets are quite low supply, so we would need to be looking for reordering. So we will get them right then.
Well, they're coming, they're coming February twelfth. So we probably have to get the stuff, including a week or so. It doesn't even have to be sixteen things the same, sixteen to say town.
Thank you, administration. Thank you, the names of persons to give to.
Oh, yeah, and thank you, Joanne, for bringing me, able to be president here. We had, you had, I thought that was first class, got the chance to discuss all sorts of things with the guy. And he came up with all sorts of ideas, helpful suggestions. One of it might be that, say, this idea of a fire committee for the province where all the communities, like a private committee, get together. Like, we could actually start working on that earliest motion for the AOA, right? And get all the fire supportive communities with us on that motion, put it in the AOA. And that's the way to make things happen, right? All the councils I've been on, these, that we've done, through a motion, AOA, but being ready for the fire season, preparing for future fire seasons by having to say in that particular way might be something that we would want to actually kind of put in. But thank you very much for bringing the guy.
Mr. Taylor? Counselor Statich?
Mr. Chair, Thursday of last week, we had a youth advisor council meeting. And I think the thing that came out of that meeting would be the most interesting council was it was a really good debate and discussion amongst the youth counselors. I just really happened to see that the entire youth council was actively and passionately participating in that. Everybody had comments, questions, motions, directions. It was really great. And what came out of that was that they settled on a annual project. So youth council does a community project every year. So what they settled on this year is a project to work with protective services. And it's likely going to be something to do with fire education in terms of wildfire readiness and some information, things that youth can do to chief the board out, if you want to show that, and certainly. And that's all I've got to.
Thank you for speaking to that, Mr. Chair.
Mm-hmm.
All right, that is really encouraging. I would like to see something with youth committee, put them in touch with the provincial fire smart. And making words in conjunction very tangible and very impactful. And I'd also suggest something else to the mayor, that I would love to see the youth community address. And that is, we've been talking about naming our fire friends. And I would, I can be very unable, except for, you're the new man, the male, that's it, to prepare a report for the youth committee and presenting to them on the requirement for naming the the drugs. And have them select names for the drugs. And that leaves, I think, that, that council with a legacy. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that, Chief Bodebough. I would be happy to take that to the agenda planning meeting and present that up to the agenda planners and maybe get that moving forward on our future meeting, something looking exciting for opposition to. Thank you for that, Mr. Chair. And that's what I have to report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Satchin. If I may too, because I was on the, on that committee, but we named the, the street sweeper, went through that process, but I totally concur that that is a major, would be interesting, that they, they had a lot of discussion about as well, so. Speaking to also, if I may, to, to the representatives from the council about this conversation, um, there's recently been a lot of R C and P recruitment happening in our community, I don't know if the, the committee has ever considered, I know in the past we had uh, presentations by members, but I'm wondering if, uh, you know, the, the committee from the agenda department would be interested in reaching out to the R C and P for them to present to the, to council, because I know that that was one of the things to give them opportunities to uh, to learn about different careers and opportunities that are out there, so uh, just, just thought I'd mention that as you guys are here and talking about that agenda, so. Counselor Satchin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, yeah, I'd be happy to bring that forward too, uh, one of the things, sorry, that I'd like to mention, uh, that, that I should, is that um, youth council kind of amalgamated a couple of departments and a couple of the statistics, and one of the other things was connected to the climate risk assessment that Mr. Russo and his team presented to them a little while ago, and they wanted to connect the climate risk assessment with the wildfire preparedness component, so they may be well be reaching out to you as well too.
Well, we have topics on, we can, yeah, we did get them to reach out the year Tory, and so we are applying to them next week to see what the agenda would like. For the February fifteenth, I didn't know the convention was going to be many, and then we just all tagged in. I just think in C V D page, Darkin, I just received yesterday, like in conjunction with our consultants, what I, I am going through this, and this is what we will share with them, help them with their fears and insights, and let's share them in the future.
Thank you. Counselor Reese?
Thank you, Deputy, um, I've heard over and over what a wonderful meeting I missed with youth, I would have wished it were excellent. Uh, I have commitments in the city, so I couldn't be there. On uh, Wednesday last week, we did meet with uh, A M president, and also our um, West Carolina rep, and the C A O is not, I think he am, also can load. And they met with the administration, it was just absolutely wonderful meeting to sit with them, give all the answers, the questions that we had, it was pretty good. And they'd love to come out again, so, and that's it.
Thank you. Renus?
Chair. So last week, we uh, had the inaugural meeting of the Indian Agricultural Society. Uh, it's a pretty exciting development, but one of the things that I learned out of going to that initial A G M is that uh, the Alberta Agricultural Societies Association has free board training for not-for-profit organizations. Uh, I get asked this a lot, when in town, hey, how, how can I find out how to do these things? Uh, so the agricultural societies uh, has some free board training, that's a resource that you can send off to people. Uh, I also stepped in last week for Joanne at the Indian Historical Society, and they've got a couple of fun and interesting events coming up next month. They've got a murder mystery event on February sixteenth and seventeenth, in the evening, from six to nine P M. Uh, one night, they've got good prizes, uh, Golden Mountains donated some beverages, and uh, Freezing Brothers has donated some food, so that's going to be a fun event. Uh, and there's also a sketching workshop, uh, that weekend of February seventeenth in the afternoon from one to three. The Indian Historical Society, if anyone wants to find out about those, and then the library. It's exciting year for the library, they're turning forty this year, and it looks like uh, C B C has uh, come out with some interest in throwing a party at our library, and it looks like that's going to line up with our fortieth uh, birthday party. Uh, so find out from the library there, but uh, it looks like a big event, and council, of course, is going to be invited to that. Uh, it's my hope that, that maybe we can open another council, that's part of that, that's uh, been sitting, sitting there in their caps for quite some time. And that is all I have this week, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and for myself, uh, I too, uh, thank you for Renus, and he uh, attended our library meeting uh, yesterday. Uh, I'm going to introduce himself and meet more. Um, as mentioned, yes, C B C is uh, looking to uh, build uh, their name in the rural communities in Hinton, so uh, yeah, so we're, we're going to be putting a committee with some invitations to community members for ideas to offer, and uh, yeah, a ton of actual ideas from Mr. Mayor, it's an excellent idea. The other thing about that meeting that came from it is, uh, unfortunately, uh, our three D printer is down. Um, we had a three D printer donated to us a couple of years ago, it was, it's so popular that it is smoking, uh, apparently, so it, it was for, it was for personal use, so uh, it lasted as long as it could. Uh, so, yeah, so unfortunately, if you need three D printing, that, that won't be able to at the library, but we are in discussions to see how we can potentially move forward and, and provide that service in the future, uh, as well, so. And with that, that's all I have to report as well, so. Uh, so our chief administrative officer is not here this evening, but anything from administration to report?
Thank you for the opportunity, Chair, and through the rest of the committee, I just want to remind everybody about the twenty twenty four, about the N S P R championship cup coming in February, uh, we're very excited about it, it's one of the reasons why the swag is at the old stock, is because we supported them. Council also supported them with that and the uh, discount on the arena rental, which was wonderful. Um, I know they're very busy getting ready for it, so, so it's exciting times. And then I also want to thank uh, the council as well for the A M president attendance in the meeting, that um, the C A O invited directors to attend with the C E O. And we learned so much about the services that they offer, and it just got a real feeling of strong teamwork, that they're, that they're a team and that they're for us. It was very, very uh, wonderful, an hour and a half that we spent, and it's quite instructive as well. And with that, yes.
Excellent, uh, so if we do have the action pending list, committee, is there any questions uh, to administration on the action pending list? All right, then, uh, thank you, everyone, we will, then we have two items, so if I want to put you into closed session, so I will look for a motion to move into closed session. Counselor McGee?
Move that we go into closed session after a seven-minute break?
Thank you, Counselor McGee. We'll head in and we are, so we'll call the question that the committee moved into closed session in five twenty-two, please vote yes.
I'm in favor of pointing, voting yes.
Okay, and that is carried unanimously, thank you, everybody.